Ken, can you hear me?
Yes, I'm here.
Megan, can you hear me?
I'm here.
Celine, can you hear me?
I'm here.
Great, Jared, you're there, right?
I'm here, but I'm on mute and you are recording.
All right, perfect. This is a special meeting of the Mohammed Seymour Board of Education. I'm calling it to order at 5:30 PM on Friday, January 22nd. This sounds like to remind anyone attending in person that please sign in and silence your cell phones. I would like to remind our visitors that in order to facilitate an effective meeting, we ask those who wish to make comments to the board to read the visitor guidelines on the table outside the door and complete the attached public participation form and bring those to Dawn. Roll call, please, Dawn.
Giles.
Here.
Keith.
Here.
Hendricks.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Hennessy.
Here.
McColl.
Here, and for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are any board members who've had an opportunity to look at the agenda, is there a motion to approve the agenda? So move to their second.
Second.
The discussion on the agenda. Roll call, both, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Giles?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
McColl?
Yes, is there any public participation forms?
No.
Okay, let's go right to the item six, which is the agenda item for the night. These are the memorandums of understanding and letter of understanding. This is the second semester work hours presented by Dr. Hall. Dr. Hall.
I was just bringing this forward so we can get this approved so that we've got clarity on what the work hours are for the second semester of this school year, just extending what we did for first semester, but do need to get this in writing for second semester.
So we have a recommendation of board organization to approve the memorandum of understanding, letter of understanding with the NSCA, is there a motion to do that? Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on this.
Which board members reached the understanding with the union on this issue?
That negotiation, I think, was done by Dr. Hall and Dr. Romo. It's pretty common. Most of the memorandums of understanding over the years come out of the regular communication meetings that our administrators have with the union. I don't know that the board, we've had many of these over the fourteen years I've been on the board. I don't think the board has negotiated any of them. Because the memo of understandings and letters of understanding usually come around as things that when we have the, when the administrators have the communication meetings with the union, there's those things that typically, items that typically come out of those discussions. And they work through it to come to an agreement. It's certainly common and best practice to have well-established work rules.
I agree, the reason I was asking is because this document says that there was an understanding reached between the board and the union, and so I was just wondering
Right.
what that was, because it-
Right, it comes down to the contract, so we, we are ultimately, we're the ones who agree on this deal. Well, this is the document that's signed tonight, right? Right.
So one of the reasons I did not vote for this on Tuesday night is because we received an email from the union that had some concerning information in it where they expressed concerns about how this memorandum was negotiated. On Tuesday, I asked that we could meet with the union to get a better understanding of what those concerns were. I guess I'm going to assume that because we're here tonight, that the four board members in the room intend to vote for this memorandum. I guess my question to each of you is, you don't have any concerns about the email that was sent by the union that appeared to suggest that they were feeling threatened in the meeting where this memorandum was put together? And you have no inclination to dig into that before just signing this memorandum through, having never spoken to anyone with respect to those concerns?
No, I don't. I hesitate. Me neither, this is the practice we have all fallen and it ought to continue. I don't understand any basis for threat.
Max, you don't have any concerns about the email that we received from the union?
No, we can still meet with the union if we want to do that, but in the meantime, we need the work rules in place. Our staff needs to know that, our real administrators need to know what the work rules are, and-
These work rules- Sorry, go ahead.
We decided we want to meet with the union, we certainly can, but in the meantime, we need to get this in place.
But these work rules expired on October 1st, so it's the middle of January. I guess I would like to understand what changed between October 1st and now that all of a sudden this is so urgent that we can't take the time to investigate the process that put together this memorandum?
Didn't we start a new school schedule and we did school starting in January? We resume Tuesday through Thursday? I think-
I don't believe the work hours changed, the school hours did not change, correct? That's the same, that's been the same since October 1st?
It's cleaning things up, that seems to be something that we're trying to do. I'm sorry you don't agree with it.
Max, has something changed from Tuesday?
Just that we've got administrators and building people who would like this resolved.
Can you explain, Max, what the reasons are for why they need this?
Yeah, I think we need to know when we're supposed to be at work and when we're going to leave. Ah, I think so too, that's standard practice to have this large an organization with this many employees not know when they are to be at work and when they're to leave is, is, that would be, that would be a critical fault. It seems to be the only reason anybody's got a hair problem about this is because they don't trust our super pad.
And I know that there were issues that were brought forward in the community about the work hours when the schools were on different schedules and the half-days and such. So I do know that it was an issue. And when it's caused to the community to bring it to attention to people, then I feel that's asking for us to make a response to it.
To be clear, the work hours are set in their existing contract, thirty minutes before students, thirty minutes after students. Is there some reason that that's no longer in effect?
Yes, because if that language were followed without this memorandum of understanding, then the work day for teachers and parent professionals would be one hour shorter per day.
And the problem with that is that in some cases, they don't get their planning time and that we've guaranteed they have.
And when we signed and negotiated the contract that I'm looking at, we were not under a pandemic. And so at that time, we were asking the people to work these same hours. So I think that since there's a necessary incident brought up, that we need to button it up.
Has there been some incident where employees are not reporting for work because there's confusion about the working hours?
I would, Josh, can't, I would ask it the other way around. Do you want an incident before we have to have a policy and a memorandum? As an employer, I wouldn't, I don't want an incident.
It wasn't on the board when you negotiated the contract as it is now. Can you tell me the reasoning behind asking the teachers to come a half an hour before the students do and a half an hour after the students leave in a typical year that does not include a pandemic?
Having worked here prior to my current tenure and having been on one of the negotiating teams during that time, that language has been in the contract for decades, be an accurate summation of that. And the half an hour before and half an hour after in a typical year is mostly to provide some supervision in some different areas as our students arrive and students leave, also to have a time within the contractual day to have some different types of meetings.
I believe that's standard practice in most districts around the area that we are there to greet the students and to see them as they exit, to make sure they safely get on the buses, to make sure they safely get into cars. I think it's kind of embarrassing that we have to define that.
So Lori, I'm not sure you're seeing the change here, and I apologize if you are and I'm assuming the wrong thing. The high school hours are now ending at 3:21. And if this agreement goes through, our staff will be able to leave at 3:30. So instead of having a half hour after school, they'll have nine minutes. So that, that time that you just said that's important and is standard practice in lots of schools around the area, we're going to be now deviating from that practice.
Okay, well, if I, I would just like to offer that, so for the junior high and high school, the bulk of kind of their planning and meeting time is in the morning, and then for our elementaries, it is after school. And that's because of the uniqueness of the schedule that we're on due to the pandemic. Everything is different and unique. And again, the hours of eight to 3:30 are just to provide the guidelines for the start and the end time to the contractual day. We also, our, you know, plan time is different this year than it has been in past years as well because our school day looks, looks different. So there's, there are a lot of aspects of the school day that are not the same as they would be in a quote-unquote "normal" year. And we certainly hope that next year we resume what things looked like in the past prior to the pandemic.
So we're going to be asking our employees to work an extra hour each day, Monday through Friday, with this new agreement?
No, it's not an extra hour, it's the same, it's the same hours that they were working first semester. And it's the same-
No, I'm sorry. If we were going to use our, the contract language of thirty minutes before and thirty minutes after, which we've been operating under since the first MOU expired in October, since that expiration, they've been able to work a half hour before and a half hour after. And now with this new MOU, we're going to be asking them to work an hour extra, is that correct?
I would not, I think that's, that is one way of wording it, Ken. But I believe that while the MOU did indeed expire on October 1st, that our staff continued to work the agreed-upon hours for the remainder of the first semester. But we felt, and the MSA leadership felt from the discussions that I had with them, that, I mean, they're, they're, this MOU is in front of the board because the MSA leadership, specifically the co-presidents, said, yep, we're good with it, take it to the board.
The problem is, we don't know what the negotiating points were because we weren't in on the negotiations. And we, as a board, weren't able to express what we wanted in an agreement. And for, for us, we don't know if this is where the MSA started and ended in the negotiations or if they started somewhere else and through the process of negotiating, were pushed into this and they are using this as a compromise. The problem is, we don't know any of that. And I think Megan asked at the meeting just three days ago that we have a closed session meeting with the executive board of the MSA so that we can discuss this and we can work out a compromise between the two parties of this agreement.
That's not the real issue here, though. I sat on the negotiation team, I am an educator, I have been for twenty-five years. We were done, it was a very good process. At that point in time, they said that. Then there has been some changes that have made, and there's not a respect for any decisions that were made before. And I'm regretfully sorry about that, but this was in July of 2018. I sat on negotiations, I'm pretty sure that's confidential information.
Celine, Lori, I'm sorry, you negotiated this agreement?
I was on the contract, the contract that you keep referencing, you are on this. What this is coming about is that you're saying that you don't trust the people that negotiated it before, and many of those people are at the table right now, the contract that you are finding a conflict with in this MOU.
I'm sorry, let me, let me clarify. My concern is that the Board of Education, the seven members of the board, had no role in these negotiations, even though the two parties of this agreement is the Board of Education and the MSA.
Okay, so we employ a superintendent to represent us and that's part of her job. So, I mean, unless you want to be the superintendent and we start paying you a salary to be the superintendent, then fine. But at some point, you have to start trusting Lindsay to do her job. And she just did her job, I don't know what the issue is. I mean, this is what, this is what we would expect from any employee, is just to do their job. And that's what she did. Honestly, I don't see what the discussion is about. I mean, we need clarity on work hours, when are people supposed to show up, when can they go home? We've got that. I don't, I don't see any reason to discuss it any longer.
What were the work hours last year? Previous academic year, what were our work hours?
Previous to this school year?
Yeah, previous to this school year.
Well, before March 13th, it was half an hour before and half an hour after.
Which we technically know about eight-four.
Well, it's, it's different, it's different for every building, but it is the same length of time as eight to 3:30. But on the clock, it's different for each building because different buildings have different start and end times. So we are attempting through this MOU to duplicate the same amount of time that teachers or parent professionals are in, in the buildings as in a normal school year. And again, duplicating what was being done first semester.
So when we negotiated the contract, we had a specific workday in mind. And with this MOU, we have approximately the same length of workday at the end. And if we don't be the MSU, then would our workday be suddenly a half hour less?
An hour less.
An hour.
An hour.
Right, so we, as the employer, shouldn't have a policy that allows for an hour less a day for the workday.
So, I feel as though Lori just implied that my question criticized the contract that had been specified before, which I certainly have no-
I didn't take that from you at all.
Okay, well, I, I guess one of the things that I have some concern about here is that I have always been under the impression, as a parent and a board member, that one of the reasons for teachers to come to school a half an hour before and a half an hour after school is to provide support to students who might need extra help. I know we've always been told, if your child needs help, they can stop by and see their teacher after school. I know many students who, on a regular basis, do that. And I know we have absolutely fabulous teachers. And if we wanted to, I could spend the meeting until tomorrow telling you stories about how great teachers have been to help people that I've heard about. We, they help kids, it's great. But this new contract says, at the high school in particular, that nine minutes after school is over, the teachers are finished. And so this eliminates our ability to have students get help from their teachers after school. And so I'm just inquiring about why we would set this up this way, especially when we just heard from Nicole that the, we have tons of more kids who are failing. So it seems to me that adjusting our schedule to take away a student's opportunity to get help after school might not be in our interest. Not commenting on having teachers work a full workday, I'm not commenting on having meetings. I'm simply suggesting we have a conversation about whether or not we want to adjust the schedule in such a way that we take away something that we had in the contract earlier, which is the ability for students to get help. And I understand, because I know many of our teachers, that they are fabulous people and that many of them would still stay after 3:30 to help students. But then we're putting them in a position where it's after the work, workday is over. And so for me, I'm asking for our board to not yell at each other, but simply to have a simple conversation about what our priorities are and if this is something we want to provide for our students. My-
It also, the high school adds a lot of time at the front end of the day.
But sometimes, students can't get to the school that early, right?
They haven't passed years.
In every year past, they could stay after school, but we had a bus, right? We had a bus that took kids to school early when school started at eight o'clock. I'm just saying, if a student can't find a way to get to school before school and wants to stay after school, or has a question during the day and wants to come, I'm just asking why we would not want to provide that and why we want to put teachers in the position where they're, we're compelling them to have to volunteer and work even more.
So there's been, I appreciate that thought, Dr. Schultz, thank you for, you know, talking, putting the students into this picture. So kind of bigger picture beyond just the work day here is, is to address some of the other adjustments that we've needed to make with just how we do business while we're operating under the rules and guidelines that exist because of the pandemic. So we needed to completely, you know, pull apart the start and end times of our school days. I mean, the start and end time, student attendance hours are completely different than what they've been in the past. And so part of what's driving that, no pun intended here, is the transportation schedule. And so we have had to just do, and I say we, I want to commend the Department of Transportation and Nick York, our Director of Transportation, because we've had to completely kind of rewrite the book on how we pick up students in the morning and drop them off and what that looks like. And so what we are doing this year that we haven't done in the past is we've been putting K-5 students all together and we bring them to school in the morning and then go back out and get the sixth and 12th grade students. And one of the reasons for doing that, well, there's a couple of reasons. Number one, we need to keep fifty or less kids on a bus. And number two, we're trying to do less mixing of students on the bus. So in doing that, we have to have, there's more than an hour difference on the beginning of the school day between K-5 and our 612 buildings. So there's, there's more to, there's, there's more to the start and end time of our school days than just the start and end time. It goes into transportation, it does go also into plan time. And so when we've got that much difference between the start time at Middletown Prairie and Lincoln Trail and then the junior high and high school starting around 9:30, you know, all of the different times within the day gets completely rearranged. This is a unique, special, maybe not in a good way, kind of year. And, and everything is, is different. And I have no doubt that our teachers are finding unique and creative ways to meet the needs of our students and provide help when needed. I, I agree with you, couldn't agree more, Dr. Schultz, about how awesome our, our teachers are and wanting to help students and finding ways to, to make that happen. So, you know, the high school and the junior high have much more time right now from eight o'clock until 9:30. That is time for meetings, connecting with students. And then that chunk of time is off the end of the day for Middletown Prairie and Lincoln Trail. Those are dismissing at two and 2:15 respectively, and then those teachers stay till 3:30. So time is rearranged and it, it looks different. And again, you know, my hope is things go back to, to the way they were. I also want to point out that Mondays are also times for our teachers to connect with students. And it's expectation that part of Mondays is spent having office hours to connect with our students, in particular, those who are struggling.
Would it be accurate to describe this as a standard workday? It allows for processes for exceptions and appointments of the same this year as it would have been two years ago? I mean, have, have we always allowed for standardization and that there's an exception that can be arranged?
We've, absolutely. It's always been what I would, I would call professional flexibility.
There's one other term of this agreement that I want to make sure all seven board members are fully aware of. And that is it, it codifies that Mondays will remain asynchronous for the entire rest of the school year. I am really unsure of why, given that Dr. Hall just tonight sent out information about vaccines rolling out to our staff and we're seeing the numbers of COVID infections dropping in our area, I personally am hopeful that we will be back to pretty much normalcy by about spring break. I am really unsure of why we would want to commit to four days only of in-person education through the end of the school year in the middle of January. I just want to make sure that everyone understands that that's what we're voting on here too. In addition to the working hours, we are saying that Mohammed Seymour will be four days only for the rest of the year.
Ken, this, this board meets twice a month. And as things change, we have flexibility like we have every year since we began to, to make rules as things change.
Have any flexibility if this were signed, this is an agreement with the union?
I think that we would keep conversations going with the MSA.
All rational heads at the table would, I, I don't get the point.
Terms can be renegotiated when appropriate.
Absolutely.
I have no problem with the-
The other four days will change too, so, yeah.
I have no problems with the terms in this agreement. My concern is that we received an email suggesting that perhaps there was duress under the, how we put this document together. I find it concerning that no one in that room has any ink to dig deeper into that. And it gives me pause to think that any future negotiation might also be made under duress. And so I will be voting no, but I want to make it very clear as to why. I find it concerning that we get an email that four of you have no interest in investigating further. And despite my request to actually talk to the union who sent that email, we're here tonight to what looks to me just push through a memorandum that has not been in place since October 1st and things have been running smoothly, thanks to the dedication of our professional staff. And I'm very uncomfortable with the process.
I, I, I guess I, I'm kind of curious why Lindsay would have to negotiate this under duress when it was already in place first semester, and there was no, um, objection to it from the board prior to that. So that's why I don't have much concern, because it doesn't seem to fit together. So it's all seems to be like just throwing a hand grenade in the middle of it to try and create chaos. Um, but, so that's, I, I just don't understand. I don't, what, what kind of duress could Lindsay place them under?
I'm the one who sent out the email after you commented at a meeting to the whole board and copied the union presidents, and they outlined, it does not say they were under duress. So your characterization is your characterization. It said they were other things that were brought up, but-
That-
It did say in here too that MSEA had not previously reached out to any board member, yet you said you knew that. So I, that's why I sent the email, I was like, wow.
You are mischaracterizing the email I sent, where I said that I had heard from staff. If that assumption that you made was that that was the union, that was an incorrect assumption on your part. I did not say the union, I said I had heard from staff. You sent your email, and then we heard from the union their concerns. And I would like to follow up on those concerns, because as Jeremy said, I don't have any understanding of what that email meant either, but I would like to find out.
We still can find out, but this still, it's the best practice for today would be we still need work rules.
Wow.
And bring anything else to this. Okay, hearing none, one other session, it's been a motion and second, can we handle any rules on both of these?
Hennessy?
No.
Schultz?
Present.
Keith?
No.
Giles?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
McComb?
Yes. Okay, does anyone have business coming forward to board tonight? Hearing none, taking a motion dismissed, second? Second? We'll hold both of these.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Giles?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
McComb?
Yes. The record reflects it's 6:03 and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.